I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board correspondent report.
Yeah.
Okay, well, on the federal side, we all know that the COVID relief bill, $1.9 trillion, got cast. $122 billion for K calls through public schools. 7.17 for technology resources. $3 billion for the Individuals with Disabilities Act. $2.5 billion in funding for non-public schools. Wisconsin's portion of that is an estimated $1.54 billion. Ironically, $67 billion was provided with the last two packages. And most of those funds have yet to be spent. And some of this money does not have to be spent until 2028. 2028, 2029. Hope it's not all that long. On the state's side, Governor Ebert signed into law a bill that would provide businesses, schools, and governments with liability protections from COVID-related lawsuits. Now, the immunity is not applied for some business or one of these entities that is negligent in their COVID practice, you know, their protocols. So that kind of takes that out of the, they still have to be diligent about what they're doing. Let's see, now his budget. The budget, 2024, 2023 budget recommends tax cuts targeted to low-income families. There's a surge of state spending, additional revenues for local governments and schools. Over the proposed budget would be an increase in net spending in the state's main fund at the fastest rate we've seen in a decade. The government seeks to pay for these initiatives with federal dollars for Medicaid expansion, which, as far as I know, Medicaid has not been expanding yet in the state of Wisconsin. Tax increases on higher earners, certain manufacturers. And those would be the largest in 12 years. The tax increases, they figured were net about $1 billion over the course of two years. He also seeks to take money from the like a rainy day fund, they call it a rainy day fund, but we'd still maintain a pretty healthy rainy day fund. The, on the education side, the budget proposes large increases in discretionary state aid to districts and new ways of distributing that aid. They don't say what new ways are going to do, what they're going to do that, they're just going to give it careful consideration. Yeah, yeah, I kind of talked about that too. And then some non-fiscal things. I remember last year, last week, I talked about certain funds that the legislature wanted to divide more, so give more people or schools that were in, actually in-person instruction. There's some more federal funding, and the legislature would like the governor to do that also, but he is not in favor of that. He's also suggesting that a waiver from the September 1 start date. And then to, because trying to play catch up a lot of these schools that are not open yet. And the robust summer school offerings to try and help address that problem. Another thing is he's calling in a budget to do a study that would require school districts' health insurance to be provided through the state group health insurance program. Right now, they're just, he wants to do the study to assess the potential costs and the savings. And he wants to look at if all Wisconsin districts were required to participate in the departments, in the Department's Health Insurance Program effective January 1, 2024. They looking at that as a start date, what would those costs be, what would the savings be? Yeah, and I thought we worked so hard here to get our insurance costs down. And then the last one here is also in the budget. Is to raise the minimum age that a person can purchase nicotine and tobacco to 21. I find that ironic that there are some that want to lower the voting age to 16, yet you can't buy nicotine and tobacco to your 21. That's all I can say. I find that ironic.
In relation to the, some of the, one thing I think it's important to recognize, like the ESAR funding is what we go through, so it's kind of crazy. So we have, you know the exact dollar. First one was 89, 90,000.
Yeah, 89.
So ESAR 1 for us was like 90,000 basically. ESAR 2 was like 384,000. Last week, we got an email that said you could plan on doubling it maybe more. So ESAR 3 will be close to probably 800,000. The sticky point for us is, what can we spend that on? Right, so ESAR 1 was very restrictive, ESAR 2 was opened up a little bit more, ESAR 3, we don't know. So when you're talking about a lot of the things, it involves staffing and other supports. So we need to give some clear guidance on what we can spend that money on, because clearly, human capital is part of recovery. And I don't want us to be forced into having to spend money on things that we don't.
I know in Green Bay, I know my nephews are going to school in Green Bay, and they're just starting up again. And they said they've got so much money there, they, you don't have to buy a supply, don't have to bring, they'll bring anything to school, we'll supply all. So.
But I don't understand, the sticking point is, we've seen in Ocho, Milwaukee, that's the sticking point. Because Milwaukee has a school, they won't go back to school, and they got 525 million. So that's the frustrating part for the rest of the school districts in the state is, is that state legislature looks at that and they want to, they want to punish that, right? But what happens is they create policy that really impacts the rest of us when we have never so it's just really unfair. And it's hard to it's hard to be a collaborative part in all that process, because we're just so sarcastic and different. So there are, I think there's deep consideration to look at very large urban centers and the needs that they have versus the other 450 school districts in the state that have very, very different needs. And obviously like us, you know, like local control and all those things. We'd rather not see an ESAR 2 or ESAR 3 funding come through that says, you can always spend it on this. And it's like, okay, but we can't even find that person. The person doesn't even exist around here, so how are we supposed to acquire that? You know, so that's the part that will play out in the next probably 69 months, really. And we'll take, you know, our thoughts and our current practice and to.
So the ESAR funds though, is that still what the Joint Finance Committee in Madison is saying that they can modify any of the Department of Public Instruction's plan?
No, I think their effort was to basically stabilize the 174 districts that have been sessioned there. So those are two different. Yeah, they.
That was the part of that.
Right, they want to basically deem where X month goes. And then you have the other side of it.
Yeah, along the lines of legislative stuff, I saw online that the budget listening session for education is April 8. And that is something you can sign up for, it doesn't cost anything. So the budget listening session is, and you can just look on the WASPA site to get more information and register. But I think you do have to register in order to be part of it. Okay, any other comments or questions for Pat? Moving on. Board Caesar report.
Okay, the PAC meeting is in that last month with the Cesar's 3, 5, and 8. They feel that you have bigger speakers when they're talking to a bigger group, so I guess it went well. There's a webinar action tomorrow, which is considering a free professional development, computer science training for teachers. It's going to be, you know, virtual, like it's a two plus the afternoon or something. There's a new report designed on the DPI website. Smaller districts did not have a gap score on this report card, now they will. I think the only exception is Washington Island. And Jeff Corrigan sent an email with the link to install, I'll just send it, you guys can take a look at it. There's also another email I want to send out, we just talked about this last week. It's called "The Opportunity Myth: What Students Can Show Us About How Schools Rending Them Down and How to Fix It." Are you familiar with that at all? I'll send you that, because I just talked about it, but he sent a whole big email. And it seems extremely interesting and so I'll just send that off to you if you look at it. English language laws, there's a growing demand for that, obviously, and mental health is a top priority that they're working on. And we're back to in-person next month, so I'm really happy about that.
So is there any way we can utilize Cesar 7 for some of our issues? I mean, the mental health, or, I mean, I don't.
Um. We can look into it, we have partnerships already.
It sounded like, especially in the retreat, that obviously we can always use more, I just wondered if.
Yeah, I mean, the struggle I have is in the past, we have paid a lot of money and gotten very little. Where you promised the world, the check is cashed, and then people disappear. And, you know, when I first started here, we, they were pretty happy with Cesar 7 contract, we no longer do because of that experience. One of, you know, the school improvement series, you know, where we signed on for 10 days and somebody came here one day in a school year. That's the problem, right? And I, I believe that we, smaller districts are often pushed aside, because it's easier to go to the suburban districts right around the bay, it's close by. They could pay a lot more than we can. So, yeah, I'm happy to look at certain things, but we do kind of fine-tooth comb that stuff.
Sure.
Just because of past experience.
Sure.
We do work, let's see, say it for audiology services and things like that. So there's always things to look at, they're going to make sense for us.
Absolutely.
I checked to get some answers on Jeff on that. Of course, I can get the answers I was looking for. And then the, the last schoolwork convention, everyone, 2019. Colleen Tim actually approached me, and she was going to get some answers for me.
Yep.
But that didn't happen either.
Yeah. It's a very consistent theme. So that's why we don't pay, I mean, you're talking like $20,000 to $30,000 for that service, and if you don't if you don't get anything out of that, that's the point of doing it, so.
I don't hear any of that on the board at this school, because I asked. I don't hear any, anything.
I mean, the one that really bothered me the last time is when they basically clumped districts of certain sizes. And then they said that you had to buy minimum was 10 days, and it's just like, well, you can't even fulfill one, how can you fulfill 10? And now you have all of the districts, you're forcing us to do that, no way. Because that's obviously, that's how they fund their clientele, but a lot of the smaller districts just get pushed aside because, you know, the pre-made public schools want something, well, that's a couple blocks away, boom. And they say, oh, we need to reschedule them, but they don't reschedule. Meanwhile, we got, you know, 50, 60 teachers here planning on that, and I think, so that's why we.
Sure. Understandable. Okay, any other comments or questions for me? Moving on, we're at citizens delegation to be heard. Since this is call-in only, if there is anyone that wishes to be heard at this time, please state your name and topic. Again, at this time, if there's anyone, state name and topic. There is nothing, we will move on. Board president announcements. Well, the first thing I would like to say or thank is John Pabek for his service. This is his last meeting with us. Because the election is next month on the 6th, and that next meeting in April, he will not be sitting in that chair. So thank you, John, for all of your contributions and your wisdom and your efforts. We have enjoyed you on this, and I'd like to give him a round of applause.
It's my privilege, and I know personally who's going to be sitting on this seat, it's going to be just an excellent expect great things of you.
You'll be keeping an eye on us, huh? Okay, I think that was the only thing I had. So we will keep going, administration. Oh, actually, one other thing, I just want to say, we had a retreat, and it was so nice to see everybody in person. And I am also, just like you say, Mick, I'm so looking forward to when we can start adding people. And with everyone starting in the schools to get their vaccinations, once they've had their couple of vaccinations, they, you know, certainly the leadership team can be back here and everything. So that's going to be wonderful. Okay, administration reports. Superintendent's report.
The first thing I'll talk about is our insurance rule. As you know, it's always a lot of time to go through this stuff. This year, we went out to bid because our numbers were double digits again, so we were able to continue with our current provider. And we really had 3%. So, all things considered, we had, I'll say, an abnormal year for us. Not our consistent well below loss ratio year. That happens every once in a while, you have those things, so I was really happy to see the 3%. And then with that, I was also, I don't know if I was elected, but.
Ah.
Was, I guess, approved as president of the insurance consortium now for all nine, 10 students that are in it, so something that I've probably made a lot of people pull their hair out on at superintendent level, because I've pushed for a lot of things. And because I think they make a big difference in our schools and and that kind of stuff, so.
Nick, are all the Dorfoni schools in that consortium?
Yep. So it's Denmark, Qwani, Luxembourg, Capesville, us, all the Dorfoni schools in Washington. We have in the past looked at adding, but it never seems to be the right timing. So they want to add when they're kind of experiencing one of those not-so-great years, and we kind of are like, no. So I think probably in the future, I don't know, we will probably add four or two if it's right, you know, for both entities, so. Yeah, so I think it's a great thing to have. I think, you know, working with M3 and City of Anas, there's always been a really good experience for us. Now just trying to get the healthcare. People aligned a little bit would be great. A much better experience of that. The second thing, just general spring updates. Obviously, there's not a ton to report on, because we just had a retreat and all that this year, this past week. But the standard in scheduling, obviously, this year we're starting to getting the Venture Academy off the ground. We are trying to do spring sports, and everybody has a million and one questions about that because of all the things that are rolling on, and what's getting better, what's not getting better, can we have this, can we have that? So it's been a fun spring, and, you know, who knows, we might have another big snowstorm yet, so it always makes it even more. You never know, but I think all in all, it's actually been a pretty good spring. And I think things, our team has done a great job with all that. All the new things that we added this year, from doing your own transportation to, you know, pro an extended amount of time being short on people and, you know, weather, that worked really well, so. As usual, so nobody wanted me to be comfortable.
Different pathways forward.
Our destiny to talk a little bit about our three distinct kind of pathways moving forward. We have Pathfinder, obviously, right downtown. Pathfinder from its first day is supposed to serve small population of students who, for whatever reason, coming to our standard traditional buildings, has not been a good experience for them. And has nothing to do with their intellect or whatever, it's just these buildings have not been a good experience for them. And they go to Pathfinder, it's their real family, they take care of each other, very individualized programming. Take a lot of students that are credit deficient, or they, you know, moved here and they have some issues, and we get that correct, they get them the help that they need. Really have had a lot of success with it. So it's a very small, you know, lots of input goes into sending a student to Pathfinder because it's unique, and it needs to maintain its culture. So nothing's going to change with Pathfinder. So we then have our elementary high school, or high school, we call it a traditional track. It is, you know, our schedule, seven-period day. This year, obviously, it's changed because of COVID and the block and the space that we need to use, but it will return to that scheduling. You know, what I can say is it's predictable, you're going to do your graduation requirements. And it has really not changed a lot since it's, it's just traditional educational pathway. Venture Academy is our charter school that we will start, which will be co-located in this building. It will focus on project-based learning, so it will not be kids coming in and sitting for 50 minutes or 90 minutes in a particular class. It will be, they will fulfill graduation requirements through individual contracts. So if Pat was in Venture Academy, she would sit down with Tleef and the other members there, and she would basically write up a contract with us on a 30, 60, 90-day cycle. And we would go through and figure out math, science, social, I think, all of those components in that project. And then we will obviously really push our kids out into the community. They will not be in the building as nearly as much as our traditional school, traditional school students will be. So when you're talking about experiential learning, it's really difficult to do that when you're, if you don't go there. So they will be out and about a lot. They will have partners and depending on particular students. They may spend their entire day at a particular experience. And all of that will be, again, part of their contract and how they are progressing. So very much an individualized kind of approach, but very much driven on growth. So not talking about grade levels, not talking about you can't take that class until you're this, you can't do that without that prerequisite. So it is taking your kids' passion and then tying how they learn and everything into that particular project and really trying to focus on obviously developing young leaders. Making sure that they can communicate clearly with not just their peers, but adults and community members in different settings. So it's actually just preliminary, they're a very, very diverse group of students that are, have already turned into paperwork for it, so the entire spectrum. So they're looking for independence, because they've had experience this year. And it is something that they really, really like. But they also like the fact that if they, you know, really need to take a college credit English, they can still go right down the hallway and take a college credit English. Doesn't, it's not an either or, it's a yes and, so.
And it's also, under the charter school, it would allow us to offer virtual to a student that found that to be a very effective pathway for them.
Absolutely.
Where we couldn't do that before in the traditional.
So a number of our kids that are interested in ask that very question, so they want to take college-level coursework, and they want to try to figure out how to do that while still being a part of it, and a lot of it comes down to taking that college-level coursework virtually. Because, you know, college classes don't meet every single day, so it's manageable for them to do that. And you'll be able, you'll be able to see that where, you know, your junior and senior level students will be probably adding two to three classes more to their days, to their days than they would have in traditional setting. So their growth and what they can acquire in 90 days is going to be greater. But with independence, you know, a lot of responsibility.
Right.
So you're not going to have people, you know, checking in on you every single second. It's, you know, a lot of it is on you and self-directed. That being said, they also have, you know, I think their collection really excellent staff members that are going to be a part of it, and they might be a part of it for just a couple hours or the whole time, or just kind of melting pot waves, where people, they're, they really want that experience. And some of them really want that, the traditional experience as well. So being able to offer both of them, and nobody's, you know, getting hurt over it or anything, so.
Well, and we're starting small, we're starting small with the max of what, 40 students, so.
And we just sent out all our communication to students that are open and all of the district, virtual, all of that. So really, any of those students that choose to come back, it's huge positive for the districts.
Okay, I hear the how, and I hear the why. So I have no problems seeing that vision. What I wonder about is the, how with each of these tracks, do we articulate success? Or how do we measure that and then communicate that as a marketing tool for our local school district? And that's where I start to say, okay, we're doing this because we want to have We want to have. All of the things that we have in our, uh. In our, in our vision. Hope spreading and stuff like that. But the readiness piece of it has to be based on some kind of measurement as to whether we're succeeding or failing. You know, is it, would it be based on graduation, uh. Percentages, would it be based on advanced placement, uh, would it be based on able to do functions of daily living, I, you know. Each one has an individualized. Definition of success, but how do we measure that, that success on an individual basis? And then market it on a larger district-wide basis, that's where I, that's where I kind of.
So in the, in the grant, um, that we've, uh, applied for. We spell that out. With with competency, we spell it out with that you have to pick. Certain assessments so that you are similar to the assessments that you utilize in traditional setting. So, um, ACT, things like that. But we also want to add in our SEL, social emotional learning, the SAVR's testing. That we do with our Wolfhead kids because it really shines a light on their growth, so. All of that will be the ad hoc committee of the governance board talking exactly about that. So there are things that we are going to use that are very similar, and then we are going to say. We want the charter school to also use this, so an added level of accountability or added. Piece that we want to learn more about. And that will be spelled out right in the contract, which then the school board will say. Yeah, that seems, would admittedly approve that. And then the governance board will actually come here and talk about those findings, whether. You guys determine that it's every ninety days or every quarter or what is it? But they will come and deliver on those measurables for individuals as well as a group, and then. For me, as superintendent, I look at this and how we market our school district is about choice, right? So we know that. One size does not fit all, and that's where I think our marketing comes in, is that. We have really great choices for our kids. And one doesn't stop you from this, and because you go to Pathfinder, you can't play this, or because you go to, no. We're, they're all choices, they all have the same opportunities, and they all perform at a very, very high level. And. I think the governance board and the school board, that's an ongoing conversation about. Are we, you know, are we beating that, is it going well, do we need to change something? Are we, you know, is that message getting out there?
I would hope that everyone who is in any of these has some way of looking at performance of what they've done and what we're thinking is important. And being able to say, we nailed it for these nine, for these ninety days, or here's an area we need a little more on and, you know, we're. Fully transparent to the, to the community of all those.
Yeah, that one, that, without disclosing every nuance of a twenty-six page, you know, application. They really, really push you to think about all of those pieces. And and we should probably just give you guys that application, because again, it doesn't matter if we get it or not, we're still moving forward. But it doesn't address a lot of the details, um, that I probably missed when I'm talking about it. And and the fact that it's, this is meant to be kind of research and development. And to your point, John, we need to talk about our successes just as much as we talk about our challenges. Just so everybody knows exactly where we're at, because we know that it's not gonna be perfect, but but we want to. Tell people we we're trying this and, you know, what, this really worked awesome, and it's something that. Should inform our practice in the traditional setting. Uh, or we tried this. Bad idea, you know, either we need to. Refine or redo some aspects of it, or, you know, we just push that off to the side and say that's. Not appropriate for our kids at this time. The one thing that I'm most excited about is the experiential, is getting kids outside of this environment. And we live in a, an area that has tremendous resources. And tons of people that are very, very willing to share their expertise and talk about things. And it's not like we have to go a hundred miles, you can go a couple blocks and we can see some really cool stuff, which. Some of our kids don't even know, well, you could say, oh, help them out, you know, but it is, so. And, you know, it's, having excited staff members is also exciting too, where they get to. Explore their own passions. See a totally different side of an educator when you're talking about the stuff that they're, you know. Beat down well, you know, that's what they love to do. I think when you see the. The kids that are signing up for it, that's what you really start to see is, oh. There's a lot of connection between, I want this experience because I watch X teacher. They're, they're just fun to be around during that element, right, so. Providing that element more often is. Of the goal at all. Kind of a long-winded.
No, I appreciate it, um, I think it's, oh, go ahead.
So if a student decides in seventh grade, maybe that's a candy, will that give me to apply or present information? To continue every year, or how, or do we know?
No.
It's gonna change, I would hope.
Initially, we put an application in, but if a student, it'll be just like open enrollment. So if a student comes in seventh grade and they want to be a part of Venture. They can, you know, be a part of Venture until they graduate if they want to, or they could say. No, I kinda wanna go back. Because they have to show the same growth and they can't be behind, um, so again, they can make that choice, um. And, you know, we have juniors and seniors that are making the choice to come from that for for one year, really. So, yeah, they can, the other part that a lot of people don't understand is. It's, it's really about leveraging all the assets that we have in that building, so a kid could be in Venture Academy. But we have the capacity to offer a very high-level math class because of our teacher in the traditional setting, well. Our kids in Venture can go to that class, right, because they have the freedom to do stuff. The same also applies, if Venture can bring in somebody that's a. World-renowned woodcarver, I, and you have kids in the traditional setting, they're like, I wanna be there. Come on over, right? So a little bit tougher that way because you have to figure out their schedule because they have, you know, that kind of lot of kids, but. That's the beauty that I see, is you can leverage resources in the best interest of your students. So in the charter. You can bring in people like that, and they don't have to have a teaching certification and all that, you could. One or two weeks or or whatever, but very, very high level, um, because it's really a project-based environment and it's spelled out in the contract, so. I'm pretty confident our governance board has a tremendous level of, uh. Expertise in bringing in people that would provide a great experience for our kids and. A lot of them are talking about that too. That answered your question.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I guess on this review, um, we've got Pathfinder, which we call Finding a Pathway Forward. Um, we have the Elgoma Elementary Middle High School, which is the traditional pathway forward, and then the Venture Academy, which we're calling the innovative. Pathway Forward, and I, I really just, I love that, I like the title. Elgoma School District's Creating a World of Opportunities by Providing Pathways Forward and then Offering These Three Different Pathways, so I think. You know, that is another answer to your question, John. Choice. Finding the path that's right for you, but you're not locked into it. So, yeah.
There's one constant, it's change.
Yeah, exactly.
You change from seventh to eighth grade to seventh.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, we'll move on to elementary principals' report, Katie.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I have two quick items that I didn't to update everybody on tonight. Um, the first one is very exciting, um, I'm happy to share that planning is underway for summer school and summer jumpstart. Um, to take place this summer in person, um, we are looking at pretty much. Duplicating the way that we have been running in-person school this school year, um, things have been working really well with masking, um, smaller pods. Social distancing within those pods, and then obviously increased, um, cleaning, sanitizing, things like that, so. We're gonna take those things that we've been so successful with this school year and we are going to. Carry them into summer school and summer jumpstart, um. There's a couple of scheduling changes as far as the sessions, we're really trying to limit the kids. Um, mixing between classes and in the hallways, um, during those summer school sessions. Um, but other than that, everything will kind of continue and carry on, um, as it had in the past. Um, right now, the dates for summer school are set for June seventh through the twenty-fifth. Summer school always runs Monday through Friday from eight AM to twelve PM. Um, our goal is to get summer school information out to families. Sometime before spring break, so that would be within the next two weeks or so, just so that families can start looking at the courses that are going to be offered and start deciding if that's something that they want to join us for this summer. And then summer jumpstart, um, we're gonna be holding that in July this school year, so July twelfth through the twenty-ninth. That will run Monday through Thursday from nine until noon. Um, information on that will be coming out a little bit later than, um, summer, summer school, so that families don't confuse those two opportunities. Um, but it's very exciting, um, this time last year, we were planning, well, we really didn't know what was going to be in store for summer school, um, but we ended up taking the virtual route. Um, it was successful, but I do know that everyone is looking forward to being able to have that in person again this school year. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to update everyone on is a really quick spring assessment update, um, it definitely is the season of assessments. I think Katie Horn mentioned it last, um, last month about the ACT, um, the eleventh graders did take the ACT last week, Tuesday. They always do a really great job with that, um. Access testing is for Yale students, that will be completed for all students in the district, um, before spring break. In April, we have the forward exam, um, we also have the Aspire for some of our high school students. And then, of course, the DLM, which is the alternative assessment, that will be administered during that same time period, so. Um, it's kind of a crazy time of year, um, but I just wanted to update everyone that planning is underway for that and we have. Everything covered, any questions on any of those things?
I don't think we have any questions, I did want to thank you though, Katie, for the handout that you gave us on your plans and priorities at the retreat.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, you know, time just flies by and we didn't really get a chance to let you talk about it, but it's. Um, been very nice to look through and if you, um. And impressive, um, very happy to see what, you know, the different categories that you, that you mentioned, the COVID impacts and the post-COVID actions and the. What matters in early childhood education and innovation in the classroom and the cross-building collaboration. Oh, it's so important, and, um.
Yeah. If, absolutely, and I just wanted, I, I just wanted to add too, I think, um, a lot of those themes are going to be things that will be coming up. Um, for the elementary school, especially when it comes to what matters most for early childhood education, I know that's a, an area that we want to place some emphasis on. Um, for all of those reasons that I listed, um, but, you know, I think we'll have, definitely have more conversations about those things in the months to come.
Yeah. Yes, well, thank you, and I, and I was sorry we didn't have the opportunity to have you talk a little more about it at our retreat. But like you said, we'll have opportunities.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, then we'll keep moving, middle school, high school principals' report and Pathfinder update, Katie Horn.
Yes, so I just had two quick things on there for my principals' report, um, one of them was a scheduling update. And we are currently working through the handbook, Brenda and Casey are working together to get the handbook completed and hopefully out. To students by the end of the week, um, we were hoping to get. Just kind of a rough draft round of scheduling done before spring break, um, I'm not sure if that's gonna happen next week or the week we come back, so. Um, hopefully, we should have that done shortly and kind of see where some of our kinks are and what we can work out there. And then the second thing was Ride for Kids, so this program was run last year, I believe, um, it's a program for students with disabilities. To just become physically active, um, Adam Pronto from Door County Medical comes and sets up, um, different. Um, just activity courses and things for kids to do, they get paired with a, um, high school volunteer. And, um, Teal and I were sitting in a meeting with Zach Blonnik and I said, I wish we could run this during the day. And they texted Adam and he came in the next Monday and we are gonna start running it, um, from ten o'clock to eleven o'clock on Wednesday, starting the Wednesday after spring break, so. Um, it just gives our kids an opportunity to be able to come during the day, I know that. Previously, the time was at six o'clock at night, and so that kind of cut into a lot of the kids' bedtimes or they didn't have transportation, so we'll be able to transport ourselves from the elementary up to the high school. And then our high school volunteers will already be there, so I'm super excited, um, to get that started again, it's just really a great opportunity for both our high school kids and our students with disabilities, so. Um, that's gonna be really great, and then Pathfinder update, um, I guess the only thing I have is Lexi sent me an email this week. Um, just with all the seniors' plans, and all of our seniors should be done with their credits by the end of April, so that is really awesome. Um, we've been doing bi-weekly meetings with some of our seniors, just to give them a little kick in the butt to make sure they graduate, but. Um, it's really exciting to see that everybody should be making it to the finish line. So I think that's all I have.
Excellent, all good news, any questions for Katie? Okay, we'll keep going, business managers' finance bulletin report, Jason.
Okay, uh, first thing, uh, with the last thing coming up. Later on, they are asked to approve our cancers, um, I'm recommending myself, Alison and Nikki, uh, for board of cancers. Um, next thing on the finance bulletin is, um, first agency insurance, um, so this is an insurance company that provides. Um, student insurance, um, to students as a secondary insurer, uh, for. The school day only, does not include, um, sports activities, does not include anything like that, um, so. Um, the rate is staying the same, um, at four thousand sixty-five dollars, um, from last year. Um, this is also the company that gives parents the opportunity to buy additional insurance. For sports activities, um, they can actually buy it for just increased, um. Uh, student insurance if they would like that, um. And it's been a, like, company that dealt with for many years and it seems to work pretty well. Uh, the last thing is, um, we have, we did our school-level reporting. So, uh, just to remind our school-level reporting is, um, we're required, um, to report. How much money we spend per student, per school.
Yes.
So this is a, a good-sized report, um, and they take every dollar that we spend. And we have to assign a particular category. Um, so we determine what school it goes for, and then, um. By the number of students in the school, they come with a formula and then determine how much we spend per student. So they, we knew that, um, I believe they were released our findings fairly quickly here. And it'll be interesting to see, I guess, where we. And it'll be interesting to see, I guess, where we compare.
Yeah.
And that kind of stuff. Like I said, it's a pretty good-sized report, but try to come down to little, everything down to the penny, because they do want to do the penny.
Wow, they don't even have you round it to the dollar.
They do not.
Wow.
So they include all our fixed and variable costs, as well as our personnel and everything.
Yep. Yep. So does matter. Yep, electricity, heating, everything down to the book.
Heating?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's, it's everything.
So we want to be higher roll on this, because.
I, you know, I truly don't know. It's, it's a ton work. You want to, I think, be reasonable. We want to be on a whack. But it could be skewed so badly.
Yeah.
So give you an example, like, oh, for example, I mean, the internet comes into this building, so therefore, it is the cost for this building. However, the internet still works at the grade school, but it's a cost for this building. So therefore, it's tied to the middle school, high school, too. You know, so there's things that, when you look at, you like, you have to remember that there are certain things that really don't make complete sense.
Yeah.
But it has to be categorized, and then like I said, it's.
So cost for validation at the middle school, high school is one thing. Cost for validation at the elementary school would be something totally different.
Yep.
Oh, boy.
Yep. So, and the report does break it down a little bit on those types of things. But if someone was just to look at the numbers without actually looking at the data behind it, you'd be in for a world shock.
Oh, yes.
Which will be most people.
Well, I was going to say.
And then it will be, oh, what did X district, they spent this, what did the other district.
And that's all that you're ever going to see is that final number.
Well, not like that. Parent of high school, elementary school.
Right.
I mean, also, you know, you get a parent that's like, well, what the, what are you doing? You, you're saying this much of a high school student, and I'm saying this much of a grade school student, or vice versa.
Right.
Well, yes, but you take a look, I'm going to give the internet as an example. You have to take a look at what this all includes, because it makes a huge difference. You know, so like insurance, I split that out by student. So our, you know, our work with comp insurance is $28,000. Well, I do a ratio of, okay, there's, you know, so many students at the high school, or so many students at the grade school, and I divide that into that ratio. So I can do some of that kind of stuff. But it's interesting with, way they're having us do it. So it is a, wow, 60, 70-page solid document.
Well, what about a school district that has just built a $80 million new school?
Yep, yep.
Does that.
It does. So for example, our renovations. So if you're going to look at this year's, I guarantee you, the high school will be higher than that one. I've seen the preliminary report, I already know that. So I guarantee you that the high school will be higher. There is, well, sure, because we just spent, you know, 1.8 billion on, you know, validation and all that kind of stuff.
It'll be an internal conversation of all.
Great.
They get everything, not the base school.
Yeah. And if you look at the report, it'll show you that, you know, it's a different color. It says, you know, this is a capital project. But you have a little color breakdown to determine that, oh, that bar graph that you see that is like this, the top portion that's in blue is a capital project.
Except policymakers that are advocating for their school districts are going to say, well, look how much we, we expend for our students versus what they do over there. Making the lower amount appear to be the worst activity has nothing to do with the needs of the management.
Correct.
Oh, that's good luck.
Oh.
So they're incentivizing efficiency, right, and effectiveness. Let's make up these wild things and give all these very, it just doesn't make any sense.
When you're trying to pick a school for your kids and you're moving into the area, that's one of the things that you're going to look at.
Yep.
How much does a school district pay, you know, per child?
Well, and for us, we have one elementary school, we have one high school. But you look at school districts that have four elementary schools. Well, one could be violated different than the other, but like you said, they just don't, they just don't know the additions. Well.
Right.
For transportation.
For transportation.
One elementary serves a very rural area where the other is, you know, and so all over the place.
Yeah. So I don't think this sounds like a very useful report.
Who's going to actually look at this stuff?
Well, that's a good question, too. It's reported by the federal government. It's for a title. So the state has a lot of things to comply.
You said the federal government?
Yeah.
File freedom of information that you can get it.
Yeah.
When did they first, this was, was it two years ago?
Two years ago, they started. Yep.
Okay.
So first year was a, they released a data with an asterisk.
Remember the rhetoric at that time? Two years ago, it was all about why do some schools, you know, spend X amount of dollars and have this level of performance? Right? And they wanted to tie that conversation strictly to dollars, not because it's in a very affluent neighborhood and they don't have a special ed department or whatever, you know.
Right.
So it was very different. So that's why all this stuff came, and they want to say, you know, one school district spends $6,000, one school district spends 16, right? And, yeah, where that good information gets used is my concern, because.
Right.
The yellow ones will pick that up, and the old ones will work. There we go again.
And this report that I do does not take any of that into consideration.
Right.
Very well, dollars and cents. So every dollar that comes in, I quote it, whether it's local, federal, state.
Right.
Every dollar that goes out, I quote it, local, federal, state. And then I compile this in a big, huge spreadsheet, and then it gets uploaded to the state, and then they put, you know, but I harder act with it all day. So.
Yeah, I fear it could be abused.
Although, we are in an interesting area, considering one school in our conference probably is number one in the state in what they spend for students. I want to see their report.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be interesting. So like I said, this is going to be released, I believe, this week. So.
Yeah, so if there are some news reports, it's very helpful to have sort of an understanding and a background when, you know, if, when comparisons start being discussed, and we can educate people a little bit about.
It's like northern Wisconsin school districts, right, that have kids that are on a bus for an hour and 20 minutes. Their transportation costs are crazy, right? But that's their service here, so.
Right.
Guarantee their cost per student is going to be super high.
Yeah.
Compared to a school district like ours, where, you know, a lion's share of our kids don't even use transportation. You know, they walk to school or, so.
Yeah.
Could be wildly different, you know, 10 miles apart.
Okay, stay tuned, huh? Okay, moving on. Special ed report. Marie?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. My special education report this evening is pretty brief, but just kind of piggybacking off of what Katie Horn mentioned about Ride for Kids. We're really excited for the opportunity to happen during the school day. We're already starting to get some permission slips and consent forms, and so it's a really great opportunity for some of our students with disabilities. And next, as mentioned at the board retreat, at the elementary special education level, we're really working on some creative solutions to reorganize our caseloads for the, for next school year. And the goal is to work a little bit more collaboratively and take more of a team approach to best meet the needs of our kids. Also, at the February board meeting, I reported that Jamie Selsider had organized a Down Syndrome shirt order for World Down Syndrome Day, which is on March 21st. We're all planning to wear our shirts on March 19th to show our support, and Jamie has organized to have some of her students help organize and deliver those shirts to help spread awareness. So it's really exciting. And lastly, we're planning to interview for the special education teacher vacancy position this week, and we're still hoping to find some applicants for another in-person speech and language pathologist. And that is all.
Okay. Any questions for Marie? Thank you. So we'll keep moving. Little Algoma monthly update. Teal? Teal?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't star-sexing myself. So I just wanted to give a quick up, a brief update as well, just on a few things. Not gonna, we're in a lot of, the middle of a lot of things with Algoma Venture Academy opening and some of the regional work we have ahead of us. But in regards to Wolfston, I wanted to give a brief update on our mentorship program. With COVID this year, we weren't able to meet in person, but Avery Robinson had set up a virtual option for our high school and middle school mentors with our elementary school students. That's been working really well. And he's also going forward and trying to do more of an in-person approach in the next couple of weeks ahead. So that will be exciting to see. Wolfston has also started to do more of our community relationship building and connections. Once again, we've really missed that this year, not being able to have community members in our after-school program, which is a vital component in success of the program. They started to reach out to some of our, you know, past connectors and people that came in, and Precision Machine, for example, just sponsored a field trip. They were sledding on Kiwanee Hill, and many of our students haven't been to the hill to sled. So it was a really great experience for them. And Precision's also next month holding a cookie and cupcake decorating contest. So they will each get their own cookies and cupcakes and stuff to decorate. And then Precision Machine employees will zoom in, and they will be judges, and the, the pups can all present their cookies and cupcakes in front of the Precision Machine employees for just some kind of fun competition and stuff. So they're really looking forward to that. The National Civic League, I wanted to give an update. The Community Development Committee of the City of Algoma just approved to co-sponsor a annual membership to continue to be part of the National Civic League network. I was really excited to hear that tonight, as I think that being part of this network would not only just benefit our school district and the efforts that we employ in the community, but it will also, of course, benefit our city overall. So we'll continue to have national publications with the work that we're doing. Our logo will be on the social media and websites, access to member info, and we'll also have discounts on their national community assistance, which I think will be really fruitful, especially for some of our work that we're doing in, in Algoma, or the city is doing on housing. So I'm excited about that opportunity as well. And lastly, with the National Civic League, we've been having continuous discussions of banners. So if you remember me talking about us getting access to 15 or 25 free banners in our community that will showcase that we are an all-America city. And this discussion has kind of been going on for a couple of weeks now. But tomorrow night, I'm hoping that the Finance and Personnel Committee of the city will approve. There's really nothing that the city has to do. There's no money exchange at all. It's just that this, this company that we work with, CGI, will kind of network with our local businesses and ask if they want to sponsor a banner. Again, they don't have to, but I am hopeful that this summer we'll have about 25 beautiful banners hanging in our community that really showcase the work that we have really contributed to, to have in the last couple of years. And with that, I'm complete.
Could I, could I add just a little thing, when you start, what is the city's role in the banner issue? Is that part of the ask is that the city produce a letter going out to businesses, asking them to be involved in the program? That's where the city comes in, like, going to a Finance and Personnel Committee. So, I mean, we, I, I look at this as a wonderful cooperative effort by both the school district and the city working together in order to achieve something for the community. But the thing is that the city has to have a name on the, on the letter and going out to the businesses. That's, that's the role of this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. I forgot that. I did, I did think of one thing. I wanted just to mention that Green Bay is a finalist community for the Culture of Health Award, and had a conversation with the representative there. And so i- if they win, I think that will be really fruitful for us as well. Looking at the map and thinking about our culture of health family, I don't know that there is another community this close together that would both be culture of health communities. And we do work with the organization that is a finalist. They're well-oiled, so they, we work with them in our regional approach. So I think that will be fruitful for us in regards to policy and advocacy in the northeast region of Wisconsin. So I just wanted to just plant that seed for us to just watch for that in the news.
That is great news. Thank you, Teal. Any other questions or comments for Teal? I don't think we had any committee reports. We just had our retreat. So we're moving to other specific items for discussion. I know it seemed a while ago, the convention, and it, because it was virtual, it also seems, you know, sort of a little like it was a, a year or so ago, but this, it would be the opportunity. If any of us that did register and take some classes and wanted to share some information, looks like you have something there. Ann, would you like to start?
Yes. What I did find out is our broadband is not very good around here. And I had, and I also had to get a new computer. I had to come up to school and get, get a computer from up here, because mine wouldn't do anything. I went to, well, I went to quite a few sessions, but three of them that I thought were very good. I did a tour of the Wisconsin Black Historical Society Museum, and that was interesting. And it made me think, what are we teaching about black people in our schools? And there were several questions of that nature. What, what is being taught? And then I thought back to when I was in school, but that was a long time ago. I don't remember anything. Maybe you talked about slavery a little bit, but nothing of what black Americans have done for this country. Um, let's see. One was from Crisis Tacoma, was Edgerton, Hudson, Mineral Point, and Stearns Point District. And listening to them, I thought, my gosh, Algoma does all of this. I mean, we're way out there. We admit when, they, they try to think, admit when you made a mistake. Well, we've done that. Find comfort in the unknown. And change is good. And I thought, Nick, stepping out of the box. Always admit mistakes, and you need a website that is accurate and active. And we're failing there. And proven tactics to increase community engagement, that was Elm Brook Schools. We need to recognize the performance of our staff. And Nick, you know, Nick, you bring this up a lot of times, and we need to thank our teachers. I mean, this has been an awful year. Also, when we hire someone, they need to know what the district philosophy is and embrace it. Then one of their suggestions was that the administration host a coffee and conversation get-together twice a year.
With whom?
With the teachers.
Oh. Ethical.
With, just find out, and I say, ask them how things are going, and can we do a better job and celebrate our staff? So there you go.
All right.
I thought it was going in a different direction. Because the last district that was in, we used to have to do that once a month on Saturday morning. The office.
Oh.
Yeah. We didn't get a lot of visitors.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's not exactly.
No, that's, that was, this has to be kind of a fun thing, I would think.
You don't want it to be one more thing they have to do.
Right.
Not a day to come out.
No, it's gotta be something that's fun and productive.
So I attended the convention virtually as well, but memorable to me probably is the school law conference that we, our, I both did virtually. And the three sessions that I went through, the first one was an untangling the complicated issues caused by COVID. And the lawyer that was presenting it was saying, I can tell you what the plans, what the rules and the applications are now, but it will change by tomorrow morning. So we need to be aware of it and best plans, once again, that we may have, may change. And they, you know, referenced the FMLA and then the FF-CRA plan as well. So all of those, those, you know, plans that are altered that we need to be aware of, but also to maintain some kind of consistency in our staff so that we, we have a plan. As we went through all of this, you kind of find to know, but it was like, there's just so much to know about, you know, how you can monitor, you know, incidents of suspected COVID and real COVID and time off and where you, how you use it and what, anyway. So it was, as the title said, very, very complicated to try and pick up with all of that. And then because I was, at that time and probably even before that, not sure at all what I thought about charter schools. In my belief, I didn't have a real positive thought about it, just because of my, my history or whatever. But I found that the presenter did a really good job explaining the history of it and the options that are within that opportunity, which now I come to realize, like, of course, this is the way to go. I never would have thought that until I really walked through all of those options and the history of the development of the charter and what it really means to a school district and how it can grow. And then obviously, that you've laid out for our students that potentially would be doing that as well. So I found that really interesting. And then the last one, I listened to, whatever, they were over on my house, was responding to social media assaults on district leadership, which is almost frightening to know what could happen and how to respond and how not to respond and.
And safe guidance.
And safety.
We need to have and play, things like that.
And who, and who does it and at what point, and not to get into a back and forth. And it can happen in a moment, of course, and, and to be aware of it or not aware of it. And then it can all just explode in your face. And then I got to thinking too, that I know, this is not, I'm not a judgment on this, but there are a lot of splitter groups that have their own Facebook presence, which is nice. I mean, to have information about the sports or an activity, which, you know, in the last year, not so much information's out there. But to try and keep that the way we want to be a presented positive, you know, entity with issues going on. So I think this is probably part of our PR, you know, and our media and all of this that, once again, changes so rapidly. And so, you know.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, my God.
I think that along with the website is gonna be probably the first priority of the committee.
Yeah.
To sort of dive into a little bit.
So I found that the day, or three hours, or I don't remember how long it took us, but it was like, I was a little bit like, oh my God, a little like, a cell here and see what, you know, what's figured, but we need to be aware of it. We can't just like, everything is great and we're not gonna have a problem with it. What do we do? Let's be proactive. And so that's what I found mostly from that, that law conference.
Yeah. And as you know, yeah, I would watch those sessions as well. And yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing. Going back to the, to the ones that I wanted to comment on from the convention sessions. As you mentioned, you know, and as we always say, boy, you know, a lot of this just isn't new information for us at our district. We've been doing this for a while. So there was a very good one on equity. And, but all the different aspects of it, I think we are well on the way, if we haven't already addressed. Implicit bias, you know, was a part of it. Again, talking about difficult conversations and leaning into discomfort and all those kinds of things. I didn't find anything new, but the thing that got me really sort of jazzed was the target-based learning and grading that Nina District and Winnicott County District are both doing right now. So they would be good resources if, and basically it's based on learning and grading feedback, and they have it on a color. Beginning is red, developing is yellow, proficient is green. It's focused on learning. It's in, you know, basically, learning, the final exam is student-driven. You know, the targets are a collaborative decision between the student and the educator. So it sort of sounds like, almost like the contracts that we're talking about for charter. So I thought, wow, you know. It also, it makes it so that beginning is, is sort of like, you know, base. Developing is, you know, the kids get in this terminology, I'm not there yet. You know, there isn't like this, oh, you know, I'm, I'm at a C and, you know, and some connotation related to a grading system. So anyway, it's been a while since I saw it, so I'm probably not explaining it very well. But it's both Nina and Winnicott County are implementing it. They started it in the high school, but I think it was Nina that has, you know, so they basically started that transition over two years. They're doing it in their whole high school. And I think they are working it back to some of the other grades. I don't know if it'll get back to grade school, but maybe down to middle school. But very interesting, you know, another, another way of monitoring achievement without letter grades that don't necessarily mean something for some. Anybody else want to share anything? Okay. Board goal revisions. All right, so we started talking about this at the retreat. And I had sent out the written copy of what I had suggested as some changes, and then received back some input and other alternatives. So that is what you have in front of you, or I hope those that are on the phone did get a copy of. What I'm hoping to do tonight is come to some kind of consensus for the first two. But of course, once I started looking at all of them, I couldn't help myself. And so that's why you see number three and number four. I wrote some potential changes. And so I want to offer everyone the opportunity to give their input and, and offer alternative things too. I'll give you a little background on that of what I was thinking of with number three and number four. But then we'll dive into the first two. So with number three, I, I guess I just felt that. I, I felt in looking at all of our five goals, there were some things that just kept blurring between them where we are sort of being redundant. And so that was part of it. I mean, if I, if I'm looking at number one, you know, the first goal, I'm thinking relevant. The third goal, it's more the opportunity and achievement for all learners. We have the achievement for all learners in our fiscal responsibility. I moved that because I thought it fit better in opportunity for all. And then when I was looking at fiscal responsibility, I thought, boy, that's sort of a lot of stuff that doesn't sound much like fiscal responsibility. So I was thinking, yes, we need to make it clear, we want to manage our resources to maximize the success of the district goals. But I also thought, we are responsible to the community and our taxpayers and all this other kind of stuff too. And we aren't, we weren't saying anything about that in there. So that's where I was trying to get a little bit more of that in there. And I even was thinking, after I wrote that, of throwing something in about advocating for public, public funding, public school funding at the state and federal levels. You know, I mean, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I guess I thought fiscal responsibility needed, at least to get in there, some kind of, I was, you know, student-centered staff, but the taxpayer is also one of our accountabilities for a school board. So I wanted to get something in there. Jason, I would be more than happy to and anxious to have any input from you if you wanted to take a stab at some of the fiscal responsibility part, since you are, you know, the one that it falls mostly on in terms of all those lovely accounting things that you get to do. So we won't talk about three and four today. Let's just try and come to consensus of the first and the second. And then, like I said, I, I will compile anything that you guys send on the other ones, and we can talk next meeting. So, comments. We have a bunch of different twos. We have a few ones. Any, anybody? Want to throw out a preference or, I mean, I have my opinions, but.
But I like the second, number one. That makes sense. I like the use of the word pathways because that's what we're using in our diagram. I think that works well together. That's just one point.
And I'm thinking, can we get down to two? We could down to two. I'm looking at for, for us, number two. Thinking, okay, embrace our district goals. And if they do that, then they're doing everything in number one. So I like, I like that one.
The fourth one. The fourth one, number two.
Any other comments on, or preferences? It's interesting because the second one and the fourth two were the ones I had circled as my favorites. The one thing in the second one, I was wondering, and the access to culturally relevant instruction. That's, I was, I crossed out culturally because I thought that might be sort of messing. We're talking about high student achievement in here.
Is relevant.
And.
So what people use now is culturally responsive.
But I want.
Whose culture are we talking about?
Yeah, I think.
I'm just saying, but.
And that's, that's where I think we could run into.
Well, and just change the, the flow of thought when you're reading through the statement. Get it off on a different tangent. And so I was thinking, if it's relevant, instruction experiences, you know, skills, it's going to be addressing any cultural issue. So in a way, it's a little redundant, is what I was thinking, that we're not ignoring that if we're saying something is relevant. So I would just.
If something is relevant to an individual, it'll be relevant to their culture.
Right. That's what I was thinking too. So doing that second, number one, but just crossing out culturally, access to relevant instruction. Otherwise.
So this is a little bit of a grammatical issue that I have. And the end of the first line in the second, number one, says, we'll give each of our students. Couldn't we say we give our students, because we say each, that's singular. And we use the plural form after that. So we just take out the prepositional phrase would be better. We'll give our students access to relevant instruction.
That's why we love you, June. We will give.
Our students.
Our students.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will read it, and then if there is any additional changes, we'll do them. But right now, we have high student achievement. We will provide learning pathways that will give our students access to relevant instruction, experiences, and workforce skills using innovative practices and technology so that they have the opportunity to attain the knowledge, skills, and mental strategies needed in order to reach their highest potential. I liked adding in having the opportunity too, because we can't, we can't promise they're going to attain it. We can only give them the opportunity, but part of it is their, you know, work too. So. What do you think?
Yeah.
Okay, we have our first one. Okay, so the second, thriving workforce. Both Pat and I like the fourth one. Any other, any other other comments or preferences or?
All, all of them use the term district goal, so we need to make that very prominent and obvious in a lot of different ways.
Yes.
My name, you want to use the term use versus utilize? That uses.
Okay.
I think just use.
That use. They actively participate and use. I did, yeah. That use. No, maybe it's, is it that use?
Why don't you take off the that and put in using?
Yeah. Using, yeah, there you go.
Better.
Yeah.
That works better. Thank you. Is it meaningful? Does it capture what we're trying to do? I think it does. Okay, so I will read it. And so thriving workforce. We will attract, hire, develop, empower, and retain individuals who embrace our district goals and actively participate in a work culture using innovative thinking, co-creation, and contributions of talent.
I like that.
Good. Okay, so co-creation is something I've never heard of.
Yeah, I was gonna guess.
Sure. Just you and I look at something and create.
Oh.
It's probably another fancier term for collaboration.
I miss you for collaboration.
It's used a lot when you're coming, well, working with.
Another person on something.
Instead of directing to a solution, you co-create.
Right, collaborate. You work together. You gotta be with all the New Lingo. Do you think that's going to throw somebody off though? I guess I am a little bit sensitive to that, even with our pathways, the three pathways thing, the engaging with legacy school. I thought, you know.
Legacy school, that kind of, like, was just straight from the Wisconsin Resource Center for school. That's how they like to refer to it.
Yeah. But if we're sending it out to our community, I don't think they would know what that means.
That's a lot of.
You know, I mean, so, so I guess co-creation, is that a problem for anybody? Do you think somebody reading this, I want these, we are going to be putting these front and center on our web, tying them into the different sections of academics and workforce and this. Do you think that's current enough? I mean, do you think it's a problematic? Should we have a different word?
No.
I like.
If you're thinking about a family moving in and looking. If you're thinking about a family moving in and looking at the website and saying, looking at the district goals, they might ask you, I wonder what co-creation is.
Yeah, they might.
That's why I asked the question.
Again, we don't want to throw somebody, you know, we want it to be meaningful. So.
I think it was created together.
Yeah, right. But if it has to be, if it has to be defined to somebody. I mean, were you thinking it? I mean, there's a lot of talk about creationism and all that kind of stuff in, in school. Curriculums and things. I mean. What would be another word we could put in there that would be?
I mean, collaboration is, I think it's at the same things.
You don't like collaboration?
No, I mean, she just said that it's the, you know, something that we hear all the time. It's not something. Co-creation is more. We hear it all the time in our community, regional kind of work.
Right.
Because you're talking about all the diversity.
Right.
But it's not necessarily something that our staff talks about.
Right, or, or like, can't mention somebody just reading, we want these goals to be meaningful outside of us. I think people know what that word means.
So a definition of co-creation is. We define co-creation as a collaborative development of new value, content, solutions, products and services, together with experts and our stakeholders. But as customers, right? On, on, co-creation is a form of collaborative innovation. Ideas are shared and improved together rather than kept to oneself.
Well, that works, you know, the innovative thinking collaboration.
If anybody didn't know, they could go Google it.
Yeah, I don't, well, we can just throw in collaboration. And the bit, using innovative thinking, collaboration and contributions of talent. It's, it's the same meaning.
Yeah.
All right. We will take that potentially.
Say, why do we need all these fancy words, Mr. Fisher?
Well, that's what, you know. But we want to get the meaning across. I mean, you could, we could stop it. Yeah, but, but I agree though. I mean, what we don't want is just go on and on and on with a lot of pretty words. That just make it look good on paper. We want it to be.
Man President?
Yes.
Member to kiss principle.
Yes, I totally agree. Keep it simple. So do you like collaboration?
I guess so. Ben, what we're collaborating on?
All right. That is very true. Yeah. Okay, well. We will not be approving any board district goals and action items. That'll be tabled for tonight. But I think we're gonna sort of consider one and two done and. And three and four, if, and if anybody wanted to change anything with five, I, I didn't feel I needed to, but. Again, they, they need to be fresh. They need to be thoughtful. They need to be meaningful. They mean to, you know, we need to be able to look at it and say, yes, this is what we want with high student achievement. And are we doing it? And how are we doing it? I mean. And, and all that kind of thing right down the line, thriving workforce. This is what we want. What are we doing to do that? You know, is it working? Do we want to change it? So they have to be meaningful to us. Okay. School motto. Um, again, I just think maybe it's time to. Freshen up our small town values, big world opportunities. I don't have any particular thing, but I did get some feedback. With, you know, and just even looking on the. Oklahoma School District, you know, creating a world of opportunities by providing pathways forward. Or in the little logo part that says ignite, engage, connect. I mean, I think that maybe there are some newer things that just feel a little bit more updated. And again, we have it on every. Piece of our letterhead. So it should sort of portray where we are right now. So. Whether.
I might, I really might just over all of opportunity because like our logo and what we put out. On the, our field side, our connections, you know, all, all over the globe, it all kind of pulls together. We're always. I think chasing new opportunities for kids and just because that opportunity doesn't exist here, doesn't mean that it. Doesn't exist elsewhere. We can tap into that somehow through our network. I just. I like.
Well, big world, I, I don't.
I didn't, I never really felt that.
Yeah, I mean, it was small town, big world. I mean, it was a cute little jingle kind of thing, but I think.
So find your pathways to world opportunities.
Or your pathways to a world.
That fits with our whole pathway.
Well, do we want to throw it out to anybody else, like the. Teachers or staff or anything to offer some and then have a. I mean.
Madam President?
Yes, Dave.
I have a suggestion. We have a $50 prize and put it out to the students.
Idea.
Yeah, that's, that's good. That's engaging the students.
Do you think we need to have a prize, a dollar prize? I mean, to be able to have it picked for the school district motto, I think would. Be pretty.
I think it just helps make it a little bit, little interesting. I was there and I don't know. When, when we wrote that model, we spent a lot of time doing it. We got a lot of compliments on it, but I realized it is getting old. So it probably needs, needs to be replaced, so.
Well, so.
I would engage, I would definitely engage, want to engage your students in that and the teachers.
So do you want them to submit? So do we like give?
So is the idea that we would have people submit ideas and then who gets to decide? I mean, obviously.
Isn't that what we did the last time?
Yep, we did.
The board, the board will decide.
Right, the board would then pick.
Right.
So did we put suggestions out there or did that come on?
I think these, the, the suggestions came from those committees that we used to have.
Okay.
Well, I, I like the idea of getting feedback, getting ideas. So how do we do that? And there's probably a little bit of. Time factor in it, in that, again, letterhead, letterhead's gonna have to be changed because. Of changing board members just for that reason alone, the letterhead's gonna have to be changed. So.
Well, you can give them a couple weeks.
Yeah.
That's time enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good time to do it, good idea.
If we get 100 responses, we get 100.
Right. Exactly.
Is the billboard still?
Yeah, the billboard's still up there.
The billboard of the castle is the world.
Yeah, also.
Well, what about the prize? Are we going to do that?
I mean, we did.
Any reason not to do it?
To do a prize?
Yeah, to do a prize. Is there any reason not to do it?
I don't think there's any reason not to do it. And, and Jason even said no, that he, he could donate 50 bucks for us. It gives people a little incentive to think about it. Yeah, because I mean, this, okay, why don't we send it out, say that it has to be, it'll be decided at the April meeting, so. It's gonna have to be in, in time for us to look at it then.
Now, if we get an overabundance of these, do we want like Nick and administration, you gotta weed them out first, so like the top 10?
Yeah.
I will take a look. It's kind of like yearbook quotes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and we should put a disclaimer in there that, that we won't necessarily choose any of the ones submitted, that it still has to be, you know, whatever.
Barb, Barb, let's just steal, are we, can, and Jason maybe can talk about this, but. I, I think we should have a discussion about $50 incentive to staff or students because I think there are some regulations on that.
Oh, well, that's what I was asking. Is there a reason we can't do it?
Okay, so then what other, what other incentive could we, do we do?
I think it has to be under $25. Is that correct, Jason?
Correct, avoid the tax thing.
Okay, I don't know that we can give it to students at all. Is that correct, Jason?
District doesn't commit to them. You got it? There you go.
Right.
I'll give it to them.
So are we still saying 50 or 25?
It's not giving anybody anything. I think I'll take care of it.
Okay. All right.
So you're doing the 50?
Sure.
But we could.
Incremental incentive.
Okay.
Do it times socks off. I'll give you 100. This terribly won't be 50.
Okay, moving on. We need to schedule Billings and Grounds Committee meeting and it occurred to me that. It's either gonna have to be before the 6th of April. Or. After the, you know, because John is on that committee.
So building grounds, here's what's on. So it's. Do we want to go forward with the lights on the tennis court, which really is small amount of money, we already have a donation for it. We have 20, 23, so it's almost, 24, something like that. Sitting in here, do we want to engage in that at the elementary school? Big ticket item is resurfacing the track. So probably not going to be just one meeting.
Right.
Because resurfacing a track is, that's a big deal.
So should we just not rush the meeting till we have it later in April? Or do you think we may as well just get started?
I think you can get it started.
Okay.
They'll be reassigning all of the committees anyways at the end of April.
Right. Yeah, well, okay, so can we have a date then? But it needs to be before April 6.
Well, it's gonna have to be the next week or this week.
How about March 29?
That's spring break.
Or, or April 1st.
That's spring break.
Yeah, that's all spring break. So is there anything available? Yeah, next week, Dave, would anything work for you next week?
Yeah, 23rd. And Nick, did you decide where we want that meeting? Can we have it at my house or must it be at school?
I'm, I'm good at your house, Dave.
Looks fine with me. I don't care.
Okay, let's have it on the 23rd then.
What time, Dave?
Uh, 2 o'clock.
Perfect.
John, does that work for you?
Is that okay with everybody?
John's looking. Okay, 2:00 PM on the 23rd then is the buildings and grounds and then the ad hoc charter school committee. Guess that involves you again, Pat and Joanne and me. Do we, do you want to give us a date for that?
Post spring break.
Really? You don't want to do anything prior?
I'd be like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because here's what's going on. We added members to our governance board.
Okay.
Just because some of them can always commit to everything from 3 to 5. So we want to have our own little meeting briefs through from all over the place. So. And that's next week. Some time, there's some dates out there yet. So then we have spring break to be back there, so. I'm thinking. Middle of the.
Okay.
And I could send that all once I go. Open eyes.
Okay. All right, so we will, we, middle of April sounds okay for those who are on the committee?
Well.
It'll definitely be before.
Okay. Well, the 13th of April, I'm leaving to a Nashville for my daughter's wedding. So that'll be the 13th and we won't be back on travel until the 19th.
Okay, so now. I'll plan for early, early April, before the 13th.
Okay, that's perfect.
All right. Okay. Moving on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2021 and board planning retreat minutes of March 3rd, 2021.
I move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Joanne, second by Ann. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us.
So.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Pat, a second by Joanne. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Board of Canvassers for April 6, 2021 election, which would be Jason, Allison and Mick. Mick, are you gonna be here?
I'm going to be.
Yeah, you're not gonna be in Florida or anything, are you?
Nope. When's the election anyway?
It's April 6. Is that an affirmative? Okay, all right.
Also.
All right, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Was that? Yeah, okay. Motion made by Ann, seconded by Pat. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve summary school 2021.
Summer school.
Summary school and jumpstart for 2021.
So.
I'll second.
You got Pat, seconded by Joanne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the 2021, 22 CISA 8 service agreement in the amount of $23,434. Motion by Mick, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. Any questions or comments on that?
Just not worried about it. All audio.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve first agency insurance for 2021, 22 school day coverage.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. We are going to table the board district calls. Any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute 19.85, subsections 1 CE FNI for the purpose of personal matters, higher staffing resignations. Motion made by John.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Roll, roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yeah.
I also say yes.